All right. I'd like to call to order the County Placer Planning Commission for Thursday, October 28, 2021, if everyone would rise and salute the flag.
My country's allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the real public, and to the nation that we serve. That's our call.
Roll call, Sue?
I don't see Mr. Cannon, so Mr. DiMattei, please.
Here.
Mr. Woodward is absent. Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Hersag?
Here.
Mr. Seveson?
Here.
Mr. Haugie?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Welcome, everyone. It's important for Placer County to conduct our business to ensure essential services for our citizens. We're doing everything we can to facilitate residents staying at home and physical distancing. We encourage the public to engage in this process. With that in mind, our public comment for this meeting will be offered in person and through a remote virtual process. Citizens who wish to comment today should be prepared to comment via the Zoom platform. To join virtually online, click on the link on the Planning Commission homepage. Please make sure your microphone is muted. You may also call in using our toll-free numbers to hear the meetings at 888-788-0099 or 877-853-5247, and please enter the webinar ID 997-626-29397. Please press *6 to mute yourself. If you would like to make public comment virtually, please raise your hand with the hand icon at the bottom of the page. If you are calling in, please press *9 to raise your hand. Please be prepared to speak at the time when I open public comment for the specific item you would like to address, which may include public comment for matters not included on the agenda, a consent item, or a timed item. If attending in person today, we kindly request that once you have commented on your item, return to your seat or leave the hearing room at the exit-only door to accommodate for physical distancing and to allow for others to provide in-person public comment. Each commenter is entitled to three minutes of comment time. Thank you for your patience as we work to preserve the safety and health of all meeting participants and ensure that each citizen who wishes to comment has the opportunity to do so. So at this time, if EJ, you give the planning director's report.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the commission. EJ Valdi with the Planning Services Division. So I think today I'll start out, I'd like to recognize our Planning Commission support team, which you see just, we almost have everybody here today. Sue, our Planning Commission clerk, Andrea, who does our zoning administrator hearings, has done that for some time, and Judy is the newcomer to the crowd. Sari is not here today, but these four make up the, what we call the Core Four. I mean, they're really the support staff for, you know, these back-to-back Planning Commission meetings and these packets that have to go out, the legal notices. They all do an incredible job, so I just want to recognize them, say thank you. Today, you guys aren't in trouble, that's not why they all showed up. But they are, but they are here just to shadow Sue. You know, we do like to have redundancy when we, you know, have multiple meetings and we can't have everybody here at every meeting, so in the case, you know, Sue's absent, then we also, we always have a good, good support staff to back her up. So, anyway, I want to thank them for that. Moving on to just normal business, there was a board meeting this past Tuesday, as recommended by your commission on September 9. The board approved the Bigford Ranch Development Agreement Amendment as it relates to fire service fees and park phasing. I think that was a unanimous decision. The big meeting that we have coming up from a planning standpoint is November 16 at the Board of Supervisors. We have three items. We have the Health and Safety Element Update, which your commission recommended approval of, as well as the housing-related code amendments. And then we also are going to provide the board on an update of the Placer Legacy Open Space and Agricultural Conservation Program. So that will be there on that agenda as well. For Planning Commission, we do have that meeting next week, November 4, the Planning Commission meeting and Advisory Redistricting Committee meeting. We're going to start at 4 o'clock in the afternoon. We have an appeal item at 4:05, and then the redistricting item is going to be at 6:05 on that agenda. And we do have a November 18 Planning Commission meeting, that's our regularly scheduled 10 a.m. meeting. We will have items on that agenda, just that hasn't been finalized yet. And then depending on how the redistricting meeting goes next week, you know, we have backup plans if there's need for an additional meeting, but, anyway, so I think we're, you guys have a busy, you've had a busy month, but it continues to be that way well into November, so I appreciate your time as well. Other than that, I think that's all I have, unless you have questions.
So the November 10, oh, sorry. So the November 10 meeting is not set in stone yet?
I think that would be a decision, and Clayton might be able to help me out, but that'd probably be a decision at your November 4 meeting. You know, the hope from staff is that you can find your way through all, all the options and come to a recommendation that day. In the event that there's not a recommendation, you know, there is another date that we'll be looking at, which is potentially.
Okay.
And you had a question, Nathan?
Yeah, that's smart. Thanks for adding that option for a meeting. My question is, did we hear back from, I think it was Chadwick with the subdivision lot? Are they planning to appeal, or have you heard from them after our last meeting?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. So we did, we did receive an appeal. It was filed in a timely manner for that, so we'll be scheduling that for the Board of Supervisors. Most likely, it will be right after the first of the year. Yeah, but the, an appeal was filed.
Okay. All right, so we'll see what happens on the 4th and make a determination if we do an additional meeting then for redistricting. Is that, that's, sounds like the plan then?
Okay.
Okay? And also thank you to the, I like that, Core Four. We do appreciate it and always look forward to our Federal Express packages coming Friday, so. We got one today, I saw, so thank you. All right. All right, I will now open the public comment for any matters not on the Planning Commission agenda, and if you are on Zoom, raise your hand, please. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak on that? I'm bored.
I think I know how to do this now. Oh, it's on. Okay, great. My name is Patty Nifer. I spoke a couple of weeks ago. I'm a Penrin resident, and, hello, commissioners and Chair Haugie. I'm here to talk about the Penrin Winery Project Ridge Guidelines, the Ridge Protection Guidelines that Placer County has in place for our area. And I brought a picture. This is taken from the development proposal that was just recently posted in front of the winery project, so I think that's why it's become a little bit more attention to the local residents. Only about 10 or 12 parcels were notified of the development proposal because that's, you know, the way the system works, but now most of the neighbors have seen the photo. Can I hand this to you? I have one for everyone.
Yes, you can. Hand them to Sue and then she'll distribute.
And the concern is ridge-top building, at least in my eyes, the visual quality and the character of the area is something that the guidelines really stress, not moving a lot of dirt, not changing the character of a community, and not building unnecessarily on the top of a mountain or a hill or a ridge. And this proposal obviously does all of those things. So the more I look into the protection guidelines for the ridge, there are dozens of different places in the planning documents that this kind of thing is restricted or guidance is given, and I just wanted to make sure that this is something that the Planning Commission takes into consideration and the developers discourage from building in that location. A winery of 75-foot height with a rotating restaurant on a ridge-top is truly not a variance that should be granted. The developer does want it to be an architecturally significant, in-the-sky kind of a structure that was made very clear during some community meetings, and maintaining the visual quality of that area, I think, should be respected. So ridge-line construction is one of the, I think, really drawbacks of trying to put a restaurant on the top of a hill like that. There are lots of areas on the acreage that are closer to Taylor Road, that are flatter, where it wouldn't be as obtrusive in the sky and completely change the community.
Thank you very much. Other commenters in the audience? And anyone on Zoom, Sue? No one, okay.
Chairman, if I may, could I speak to that last public comment?
Yes.
Just for the public's benefit, so we do have a new application for what is called the BEM Winery in Penrin. This is a project that will be going through an EIR process. It has already been to the municipal advisory councils, I think, as an information item, and it'll probably be going there, you know, in the future as well, so there'll be lots of opportunity for public input on that project. You know, we have NOP scoping meetings, draft EIR meetings, you know, more MAC meetings, all that prior to this comes to you for consideration, so I just wanted to put that out there for the public, so they're aware.
If that's where we are in the process with the NOP scoping, and we're looking minimum six months before we might see something on this?
More likely, a year.
A year, okay, yeah.
Just, yeah. But we have received quite a bit of public comment or correspondence, so I just wanted to make sure everybody was where, where we're at in the process.
All right.
Nathan? Thanks for the heads up on that. I think, in particular, I'm, I'm interested in being invited to the MAC where this might be on the agenda. If we can get a heads up on that, I'm not sure when that might show up, but I'd like to be at a MAC where it's presented to the community.
I would as well, too.
Certainly.
Thank you.
All right. All right, any other public comments, either in the audience or online? I don't see any here. Okay, with no other comment, the public comment for matters not on the agenda is closed. We will now move to the consent agenda. Would any commissioner like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there anyone from the public who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Do we have anyone, Sue, with a hand raised? No, all right. With that, then I'd look for a commissioner to make a motion on the consent agenda.
Make the motion that we approve both sides of J and B.
Is there a second? And we have a second. We have a first and a second on the consent agenda. Roll call, please.
I have a first from Mr. Johnson, a second from Mr. Hersag, so a vote for Mr. DiMattei, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Hersag?
Yes.
Mr. Seveson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Now we're moving on to our first timed item, the Petco Auburn Expansion Veterinary Clinic Conditional Use Permit Modification. Members of the public may now raise their hand or press *9 if you're calling to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Kara is going to be making the presentation today.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, planning commissioners. Kara Conklin with the Planning Services Division, and the item before you this morning is the Petco Conditional Use Permit Modification. The applicants are proposing to allow a veterinary clinic as an accessory use to their retail use and also expand the retail store. So the project is located on the southeast, southeast corner of the Rock Creek Plaza on the corner of Highway 49 and Bell Road in North Auburn. It is zoned Commercial Plan Development, combining Design Seen At Quarter, combining Aircraft Overflight. The existing Petco building is 13,606 square feet, and Petco is proposing to expand into the adjacent vacant space, which is 2,921 square feet. It was formerly a Radio Shack. So a little bit of background on the project, the Rock Creek Plaza was constructed in 1980, and at that time, no use permit was required for its establishment. In 1983, the first conditional use permit came through for a bowling alley, however, that was never constructed. In 1989, a second conditional use permit was approved to construct a 6,120-square-foot freestanding pad building. And in 1994 and 1995, subsequent conditional use permits were approved to allow outdoor sales and displays for Payless Drugstore, which is now Rite Aid, and Kmart, which has since closed. In 2007, the Planning Commission adopted a mitigated negative declaration and approved a conditional use permit and variance for remodel and expansion of the Rock Creek Plaza. So Petco is proposing to modify their conditional use permit to allow a veterinary clinic as an accessory use to the retail store. Petco is also proposing to expand into the adjacent space and renovate a portion of their existing building. The proposed veterinary clinic would occupy roughly 1,800 square feet within Petco and would be full-service, offering medical and surgical care primarily for cats and dogs. And in the previously approved conditional use permit and variance in 2007, it allowed for a reduction in parking spaces for the Rock Creek Plaza due to the variety of tenants within the center. Condition 1 of the 2007 conditions of approval state, a variance is approved to allow for a reduction in the required number of parking spaces from 1,328 to 954. On-site parking shall not be reduced nor shall further expansion of any individual building within the center occur without first modifying the conditional use permit. The veterinary clinic requires six parking spaces, so one space per 300 square feet of gross floor area, and staff has determined that there is adequate parking available for the veterinary clinic. And so you have two recommendations here before you. The first one is to find the Petco Conditional Use Permit Modification categorically exempt from environmental review under SEQA pursuant to the provisions of Section 15301E of the California Environmental Quality Act, and then that is also supposed to be in Section 183603OE of the Placer County Environmental Review Ordinance. And your, your second recommendation is to approve the conditional use permit modification to expand the Petco store by, that's the typo as well, that should be 2,921 square feet, and renovate a portion of the existing store to add a veterinary clinic as an accessory use, as supported by the findings and conditions contained in the staff report. I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you. Thank you.
So does the commission have any clarification questions for Kara? Seeing none?
I guess I do.
Go ahead, Rick.
Let me see, I notice that the, I guess what I'm wondering is, Petco to expand is modifying a conditional use permit, but I notice that, like, the Kmart is, you know, they're building three different areas, and unless I missed it, I don't remember them coming in for a modification of a conditional use permit. So what's unique about Petco?
So this is, they're actually, the modification to the use permit is actually to add the veterinary clinic as an accessory use. So they don't need to modify to expand into that adjacent space. They just need the modification for the veterinary clinic.
Okay, that clears it up. Thank you.
But I don't know about the other, the Kmart and the other buildings going in there.
Yeah, the Kmart renovation went through a design review process for parcelling out that building, which is, you can see, is under construction right now.
Okay. Other questions for clarification from the commission? No. All right, is the applicant here, and does the applicant want to speak? All right, Sue, you'll bring him in.
Mr. McClellan?
Ms. McClellan, you're...
This mic is, is on.
Yeah, the microphone is on, but we can't hear you. Can I hear you calling in? We're trying to contact Ms. McClellan, and we'll pause until we find out where he is.
Hello, this is Matt McClellan. Can you hear me now?
Now we hear you, thank you.
There we go. Sorry about that, technical difficulties. Yes, as far as the vet clinic expansion, I think it was laid out pretty clear, but if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right. Does the commission have any questions of Mr. McClellan? Seeing none, thank you so much. At this time, all right, at this time, we're going to open the public comment portion. So is there anyone here within the building who would like to make a comment? Seeing none, Sue, do we have anyone on Zoom? No. Seeing none, we're going to close the public comment period. I don't see there's a need to have a response from Kara, so thank you. And at this time, let's bring him back to the commission for a discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
We find the Petco CUP Modification categorically exempt from environmental review under SEQA pursuant to the provisions of Section 15301E of the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines and Section 18.36.038 of the Placer County Environmental Review Ordinance, Class 1 Existing Facility.
If I could just provide a slight modification of that, I believe the recommendation misstates it as subdivision A, and it's, should be subdivision E, I think, if that's correct.
In Section 18, that one?
Yes, so it would be Section 18.36.030 subdivision E instead of A. The slide's incorrect, got a typo.
Okay.
Second. We have a first and a second. Roll call, please, Sue.
I have a first from Mr. DiMattei, a second from Mr. Hersag, so a vote for Mr. DiMattei, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Hersag?
Yes.
Mr. Seveson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second motion.
I'd like to make a recommendation that we approve the Conditional Use Permit Modification to expand the Petco store by 2,200, that's a typo, correct?
921, I think.
921 square feet and renovate a portion of the existing store to add a veterinary clinic as an accessory use, supported by the findings and conditions contained in the staff report.
Clarification, please. It's hard to have recommendation and approve in the language, and so are we recommending or approving this item?
So this is for approval?
Okay. I'll second that.
All right, we have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
A first from Mr. DiMattei, a second from Mr. Hersag, so a vote for Mr. DiMattei, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Hersag?
Yes.
Mr. Seveson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
The decision of the Planning Commission may be appealed by anyone who appeared at today's hearing and provided comment, or anyone that submitted written comments on this item. An appeal must be filed within 10 days of today's date and shall be accompanied by a filing fee of $619. We are moving on to our second timed item, the Ridge Draft EIR Public Meeting to Accept Public Comments. Members of the public may now raise their hands or press *9 if you're calling in to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Christopher Schmidt is supervising planner, will be presenting this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Chris Schmidt with the Planning Services Division. The Planning Commission is going to be conducting a public hearing on the draft EIR for the Ridge project. The hearing, the purpose of today's hearing is to receive public comment and input on the draft environmental review document. The SEQA guidelines do encourage public hearings during the 45-day public review period. However, it is county policy that we always hold public meetings on all EIRs for projects that come to the commission. So the Planning Commission, in a future date, will be making a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for consideration of a final environmental impact report and the required entitlements needed for the project. This meeting reviews the adequacy of the draft EIR, and is not an opportunity to debate the merits of the project itself. So the county did notify a bunch, a bunch of edinies about the availability of the draft EIR, so property owners within 300 feet of the project site, and it's five property owners, because it is somewhat rural area. Anyone who commented on the notice of preparation earlier this year, and that's two public members, a copy was provided to the Penrin Public Library, also a copy was deposited at seizure offices here and county clerk's offices. We also provided notification to state and federal agencies and local tribes, public agencies, including school districts, other county departments, the rural Lincoln, and also the horseshoe bar Penrin Municipal Advisory Councils. We also published a notice in the Sacramento Bee newspaper. So the project site is located southeast of Clark Tunnel Road and Highway 193 east of the city of Lincoln. A little closer up at the project site, you can see the U-shaped property, and it is on a ridge-top, so this is steeply sloped on these three sides down into the valley below. Highway 193 is about 4,000 feet north of the project site, and current access today is from Clark Tunnel Road, which is paved in this area, but becomes a dirt road through the Bigford Ranch property into, into the town of Loomis, or Penrin, sorry. The project site is 25 acres, currently vacant, used for cattle grazing. So access eventually, eventual access to the project site will be through the Bigford Ranch project, and access is provided from Sierra College Boulevard, so quite a distance away. A Bigford Ranch Phase 1 is currently under construction. Eventually, it'll be 1,890 residential units spread across 1,928 acres. Couple pictures of the project site, on the top left is looking at the future residential lots, looking to the north, and the second picture is looking to the east where the residential lots will be located, and you can see how it slopes down into the valley below. Just a couple more pictures, scattered oaks in the footprint of the residential lots, and then the view to the north into the valley below. So the proposed project includes 34 residential lots, an open space lot of a little over an acre, which will be for stormwater retention, a 300-foot off-site fuel management zone to provide wildfire protection, six low-density lots, so six custom home lots ranging from 1.1 to 2.2 acres, and on the south, 28 medium-density lots ranging from 13,700 square feet to 38,416 square feet. And while we're at this slide, I'll point out that there are similar-sized large lots here within the Bigford Ranch project, so adjacent, and also on this side to the east. And then on the south side of future Bigford Ranch Road is Bigford Ranch Neighborhoods, which have smaller lots than what's proposed here. There's a gated entryway off of Bigford Ranch Road proposed, and then three emergency vehicle access routes on the east and west connecting to future Bigford Ranch residential neighborhoods, and then a full excess EVA out to Bigford Ranch Road. The current habitat on this site is mostly scattered oak woodland, mostly... The current habitat on this site is mostly scattered oak woodland, mostly in the fuel management zone, but also in residential, future residential lots. A few wetlands, quarter-acre seasonal wetland in the fuel management zone, and then a small 1.11 acre seasonal wetland within the residential lots. So project timing, so this project is contingent on Bigford Ranch being constructed. So the first Phase 1A of Bigford Ranch is currently under construction. Eventually, it'll be three phases. Their first part, Phase 1 of Bigford Ranch includes 1,000 units. It will connect to Bigford Ranch's utilities. A PCWA is going to supply the water, and the county will supply the wastewater services. There will be frontage improvements required along the future Bigford Ranch Road. So since this is only 34 lots, there's no chance that this applicant can actually construct Bigford Ranch Road out to Sierra College or extend the water and sewer lines. So in the EIR, you'll see about the baseline condition. The baseline is assuming all the homes in Phase 1 of Bigford Ranch are constructed, so all 1,000 homes. I can tell you that Bigford Ranch is optimistic about their lot sales and the builders that are interested, they're soon going to be submitting plans for Phase 2. However, this project could actually construct about 400 feet of Bigford Ranch Road. So Phase 1 of Bigford Ranch ends here at this cul-de-sac. This developer could make this extension out to their project site and wouldn't have to wait for all of Phase 2 in Bigford Ranch to go forward. So there is that option. So the EIR talks about mitigation measures for this project. The Bigford Ranch EIR would cover any impacts or off-site impacts for construction and extension of Bigford Ranch Road here. The three project entitlements needed for the subdivision, a general plan amendment to change the land use designation from agriculture timberland, 10-acre minimum to medium-density residential on the north side, or actually on the south side, 13.85 acres of medium-density residential. And then for the large lots, 11 acres of low-density residential. Rezoning from farm minimum building size of 10 acres to residential single-family minimum building size of 8,000 square feet, so that's 13.85 acres. And residential single-family minimum building size of 10,000 square feet for the 11 acres. And then approval of a vesting tentative subdivision map. So the timeline for the environmental review, the notice of preparation was released December 30th of 2020. The public comment period for the NOP lasted until January 28th, 2021. We did have a public scoping meeting on January 14th, and then this draft EIR was released for public comment on October 20th. So a bunch of impacts were not analyzed in the draft EIR. The initial study concluded that there was no impacts and no mitigation measures were needed. You can see that list over here. Impacts that were analyzed in the draft EIR include aesthetics, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions and energy, biological resources, transportation and circulation, and wildfire. So there are no recommended mitigation measures for air quality, greenhouse gas emissions and energy. For the other impact areas, there are 24 recommended mitigation measures. All the other impacts can be reduced to less than significant, or there were no impact. There is one significant unavoidable impact, and that was to vehicle, for transportation, vehicle miles traveled. So the VMT per capita for the proposed project is 29.55 per person, which exceeds the county's adopted threshold for residential land use by about 12%. So since this property is quite a distance from services and jobs, there's no way to meet the VMT threshold. So even with the implementation of a transportation demand management program, it would only marginally improve the VMT, but it still would exceed the threshold of 26.39. CEQA does require the county to look at alternatives to the proposed project that would meet most or all objectives while reducing the magnitude of or avoiding any of the environmental impacts of the project. Three alternatives were considered, including a no project, no build, a cluster development alternative, and also a large lot alternative. So the cluster development alternative would push all the lots to front along Bigford Ranch Road. So it'd be 17 lots with a significant increase in the amount of open space, 12.72 acres versus the 4.75 in the proposed project. The large lot alternative would have 10 lots, each a minimum 2.3 acres in size, and even at this large lot size, a community plan amendment and rezoning would still be required. But we do need to identify the environmentally and superior alternative. Since implementation of the no project alternative would result in no impacts, that would be considered the superior alternative. However, none of the project objectives are met, and it's not considered a realistic alternative. Both the clustered alternative and the large lot alternative would result in fewer impacts than the proposed project, and because the cluster development alternative would result in a smaller area disturbance, this alternative would result in fewer impacts to biological resources and fewer impacts to oak woodlands. Based on that, the cluster development alternative would be considered the environmentally superior alternative to the proposed project. So besides today, there will be opportunities for public input as this project moves to the process. Today, we have the hearing for public comment. This is not the end of the public comment period. That is on December 3rd, 2021. Any person who submits a written or oral comment on the draft EIR will receive a formal response to the comments in the final EIR. We will be taking this to Horseshoe Bar Penrin MAC, actually in November, just as an information item. It will not be a formal opportunity to comment on the document, but just give them an update of where we are in the process. We'll return to the MAC as an action item and for a recommendation. That'll be sometime early next year. We'll come back, we'll come back to you in early 2021 for a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, and ultimately, the Board of Supervisors will consider the project since it is a GPA and a rezon. And that'll happen probably late winter. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the commission. I do hear the project applicant here in the development team, and our environmental coordinator is joining us via Zoom if you have any questions for them.
Well, let's start off, any questions of the- Yep, Nathan?
Oh, thank you. Really well done, Chris. I appreciate you answered actually a lot of my questions. If we can go back to the larger map, I think it might have been 18, slide 18. I did have a question about how that phase, you know, development of the road would happen. I think the, isn't there a larger map? Okay.
Say it better.
Yeah, let's, let's start here. That visual is really helpful. Did you say right here that there would be access off Sierra College when you were on this slide, eventually at all?
The only, only access to the project site is from Sierra College Boulevard.
And is that planned to be, is that going to be the main point of access off Sierra College?
For, for the Bigford Ranch project.
So is there any obligation for D cell along that place?
There's, there's a whole series of improvements on Sierra College Boulevard.
Okay.
This project does not trigger that. It's in the development agreement for the larger Bigford Ranch project. So you'll see the Sierra College improvements going over three different phases.
Okay, and then on the other map where you indicated the road, how Bigford and this community will, will partner depending on the phases and obligation for the road development. There was also an indication about water and how water would be brought, certain amount of feet. Where is that water ending and how is that going to be?
So-
Same spot?
At the end of Phase 1 of Bigford Ranch, the utilities will be stubbed here. So this applicant could extend those to the project site. And they'd have to bring it all the way across their frontage and end it here. Then when Bigford Ranch Phase 2 goes in, they would pick it up and then extend for the-
Okay, great. So this kind of ultimately leads to my main question, and that is, it seems like there's, there's an option, or we may need to rely on Bigford Ranch CEQA analysis. And in that event, when we actually make the recommendation, will we have to have a several, a separate vote on that CEQA analysis to approve this CEQA for this community, but then also approve the original CEQA analysis done by Bigford? Will those be two separate recommendations that we make?
Yeah, it's kind of a, it's hard to wrap your head around. And we struggled at first until we finally understood it, at least at a staff level. So the Bigford Ranch project is approved, their environmental document has been certified. We're not touching it. So if, if they do any of this off-site work, they have to just go implement the mitigation measures in the Bigford Ranch specific plan in the environmental document. We're not opening those up, they're tied to those, we barely mention it in this document. We just say, if you do the off-site work, go look at that document, see what you're required to do.
And that's okay?
Yeah.
That'll, that'll hold up? Yes, so you, you have a prior approved project with Bigford Ranch and the environmental impacts related to that. So as long as, so all of the off-site portion has already been analyzed, as long as they're not changing any of those approvals. The extent that they need to do any off-site work, it is dependent on the mitigation measures and the impact that is in that Bigford Ranch EIR.
Okay. The key to understanding that is that the EIR doesn't specify who must build that and do the mitigation. It's whoever does it. So it's either going to be the Bigford Ranch developer or this applicant.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, this comes up and someone says, you did not consider this impact.
Yeah.
Even though it's referred, we didn't recognize it with a formal vote. So I didn't know if those were going to be separated or acknowledged in the staff report, and it seems like we got that covered. Thank you.
Okay, Anthony?
Will Bigford Ranch Road eventually connect to Clark Tunnel? Will that be an egress if there's an emergency or emergency service vehicles to be able to get up Clark Tunnel to Bigford Ranch?
Yeah, Clark Tunnel Road becomes EVA access, and that was a condition of the Bigford Ranch project. So it'll be improved, but not for public access. It'll be improved just for fire, fire vehicle or people evacuating from the project site.
So it will be connected during what phase?
It'll be part of their Phase 1.
Okay. That was it. Thank you.
So it'll be before this project goes through, the Clark Tunnel EVA will be in place.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I guess I wanted to follow up with that. That was kind of my question too, but could you show us on the map where the Clark Tunnel Road is?
So it's this line here. It's paved up to about this point, and then becomes a dirt road. It's a county road today, but will be, I believe we re-abandon them right away to become an EVA as part of Bigford Ranch. So out to, or out to Highway 193, our tunnel road is shown right here.
Okay, and that's about where Phase 1 ends, isn't it? So-
Yeah, Phase 1 ends right about, right at this intersection.
Okay, that answers my question. I was thinking that, I remember the Bigford Ranch, the Clark Tunnel Road was going to be an EVA for, for the Bigford project, and so this clarifies that it would be constructed before this project.
And that was important, that was important to the community that Clark Tunnel Road not be full access.
Would not be what?
Would not be full public access into the Bigford Ranch, so it's just-
Oh yeah, it was going to be an EVA type road.
Right, it'll be gated.
But I guess my question was where it's at and whether it would be constructed before this project gets going, and it sounds like it will be as part of Phase 1.
It will be.
Okay, thank you.
Another question about Clark Tunnel, will the EVA be redone? So if they had to get out through Penrin Way, will that be accessible, accessible as well?
I'm not entirely sure of where all the Bigford Ranch EVAs are. I think there's a map in the, in the environmental document that shows that, but I believe there's another EVA out here, and this is probably an EVA over here. There's probably one over here someplace. I believe there's three emergency vehicle access routes out of Bigford besides the main road.
There's a gate there now, but it's just all gravel.
Yeah, so they'll improve it so that it's drivable in case of an emergency.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioner questions? At this time, does the applicant have anything to say?
Good morning, Commissioners and Chair Haugie. This is Sabrina Teller. I'm the CEQA attorney for the applicant and sort of their designated representative today. We don't have anything to add to Chris's excellent presentation, but if there are any specific questions about the project design or, you know, any, any details about the project that Chris didn't answer for you, we're all available for your questions, but we don't have a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina. Any questions of the commission of the applicant? Seeing none, then let's move on to the public comment period. So I'll open up the public comment period. Is there anyone here in the building who would like to speak?
Good morning, Patty Neifer, Penrin. I wasn't planning on speaking today, so let me just get my thoughts together. I had seen the project. It, the Penrin community knows a little bit about it. I'm glad to hear it will be in front of the MAC again. I'm also glad that many of you saw the long history of the Bigford Ranch project and kind of were part of seeing all the community comment and the accommodations that were made. In the general plan revision years ago, might have been 20 years ago, that 2,000 acres was changed in the general plan for housing. It was told to the community, we need more housing, so we're going to designate this area approved by the Board of Supervisors, and that opened the door to development there on the Bigford Ranch 2,000 acres. My concern is that the general plan will now have to be, and the community plan will have to be revised, changes have to be made in the entire general plan to allow another development next to Bigford Ranch. The next question is, there's more property all around Bigford Ranch along 193 Sierra College. Will the general plan be amended every time a new developer wants to put a development around Bigford Ranch? Bigford Ranch allows the access for more development because they're building the infrastructure, but the initial intention of changing the general plan was to allow more construction in a concise area, and the rural community around it was supposed to stay the same. So changing the community plan and changing the general plan to accommodate one additional lot of 30 homes doesn't seem like the solution to me, and it doesn't seem like the intent of making that 2,000 acres a developed area. So that's, there was other community comment at MAC meetings, lots during the Bigford Ranch proposals, so I don't know how much of that will end up as community comment for this project, but it just seems like a backward way to do things to change the general plan when a developer wants to put a new development in.
All right, thank you so much. Other comments here in the building? Are there comments on Zoom? No hands raised, all right. Being there is no other comments, then we will close the public comment period on the project. Chris, do you want to make any comment to close your-
Just a reminder that any written comments are due to the county by December 3rd can be addressed to Environmental Coordination Services here in this building via email at sedreecs@placer.ca.gov. We also do have the environmental documents and any other project information on the county's website, and you can see the address there below.
Okay. At this time, is there any discussion of the commission to give direction to be included in the EIR? Seeing none? With that, then this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.